Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Okay. I guess I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. This is our first meeting of 2016. First thing on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Anyone have any questions, additions, changes to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as it stands.
Second.
I got a motion by Dave Brusick, second by Sean Ru. Ryan, to approve the agenda as stand. If there's no other questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, agenda passes four zero. First thing on the agenda is, Jim, would you like to do a quick introduction before we swear in?
Yes. Honorable Mayor and Counsel, at your December 7th meeting, Council meeting, you approved the appointment of Ms. Jessica Bourne as a police officer for the City of New Prague, New Prague Police Department. Jessica is here tonight for an introduction. Ms. Bourne was raised in rural Janesville, Minnesota, attended high school there. She received a Bachelor of Science degree in law enforcement from the Minnesota State University of Mankato. She continued her law enforcement clinical training with Hibbing Community College. She was hired by Lee Sauer County Sheriff's Office as a 911 dispatcher jailer in May of 2012. She passed her post test and maintained her post license by working part-time with Waterville Police Department since July of 2013. Ms. Bourne continued to develop herself professionally through her experience and training over the past two years. Because of Ms. Bourne's experience, training, and demeanor, and personality, she would make a great, she will make a great addition to the New Prague Police Department. She will serve the citizens of New Prague with professionalism and integrity. I'd like to introduce you to Jessica Bourne, Officer Bourne.
Oh, we're gonna have Jessica be sworn in.
I, Jessica Bourne, on my honor, will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, or the public trust. I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I will uphold the United States Constitution, the Constitution of the United States of Minnesota, and its laws. I will uphold the ordinances of the City of New Prague and faithfully serve my agency and community to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And welcome to our police force. I know you're gonna do a great job.
Thank you.
If you have any issues or anything, see Sean. No one.
Thank you.
As a point of distinction for the council and the community, Jessica is the city's first full-time female police officer. So, this is kind of a major notable date change for all of us in the organization to finally break ranks and bring in a female police officer to assist in the overall organizational aspects of our PD. So, we're excited to have her with us.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica.
Some fans with her. Jessica, did you want to introduce your guests that are with tonight?
All right.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Okay, second on the agenda are the 2016 appointments. First is City Attorney.
I'll take that. No, I'm just kidding. Sorry.
No, that's fine.
Background, a little bit of background from Mayor Council. Scott Riggs has indicated an interest in continuing to serve in the capacity as City Attorney, Legal Counsel for the city. He's been the City Attorney since approximately April of 2003, or almost 13 years. Hourly rate for 2016 for generals, legal services, is at the rate of $155 an hour for general civil matters. And then you can see the rates for the other various types of items. Nominal change from 2015. So, city staff would recommend in the council that Mr. Riggs be reappointing to City Attorney.
Okay. Any questions at all for Mike? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve Scott Riggs as the City Attorney.
I'll second it.
Second by Janet Tuma. If there's no other questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. Next, item B is the City Council Members to Boards and Commissions. After conferring with each council member, it was decided that we would continue with the same appointments, which means that Utility Commission is Amy Jurick. Park Board is Amy Jurick. Planning Commission is Janet Tuma. Joint Powers, City and School District is Sean Ryan. Golf Board is Janet Tuma. EDA is Chuck Nicolai and Sean Ryan. Cedar Lake Sanitary District is Dave Brusick. Ambulance Advisory Committee Chuck Nicolai and New Prague Area Community Center Board is Dave Brusick. Those are my recommendations. I guess I'll look for a motion to approve those.
So moved.
I'll second it.
I got a motion by Dave Brusick to accept the council member appointments, and second by Janet Tuma. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. Next, I know we just did this, I think, in July after Mark resigned, but we need to appoint a City Council Vice President. And basically, the Vice President's role is to serve as the mayor when the mayor is out of the country or on vacation. And I guess, based on his past experience, I guess I'd like to nominate Dave Brusick to be the Council Vice President.
I'll second.
Got a second by Sean Ryan. Any other comments, Dave?
Yeah. I would think after the last meeting that you would not want me up here. Certainly Mike wouldn't, because he's had to do all the work.
Or it's just an indication we need him to act in that capacity a little more often.
That's true. I might have to start taking more vacations. Okay, I got a motion and second, and one comment that we'll just kind of maybe keep that off the record, but all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Four zero, congratulations, David. City Personnel. We have to approve the city personnel. I guess we're looking at City Administrator Mike Johnson, Police Chief Emergency Management Director James Garres, Planning Community Development Director Ken Andich, Public Works Director Glenn Stika, Utilities General Manager Bruce Reimers, Finance Director Patty Soide, Fire Chief Jeremy Tokolsky. And then, we also are approving this Fire Department Personnel. We have Tom Sokup, First Assistant Chief, Tom Musso, Second Assistant Chief, Steve Rinda, Captain One, Phil Werner, Captain Two, Kurt Novotny, Captain Three, Greg Pin, Lieutenant Number One, Brad Novak, Lieutenant Number Two, Steve Rinda, Training Officer, Bob Conley, Dive Coordinator, Brad Novak, Secretary, and Andy Tupi, President. President, oh, President, President. Any questions regarding any of those appointments? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve those appointments.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusick. If there's not any other questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay. Moving right along. We have what? The city depositories. It looks like the recommendation is to have, basically, the three banks and the advisory of Wells Fargo as our banks. We have Round Bank of New Prague, State Bank of New Prague, US Bank of New Prague, Wells Fargo Bank of New Prague, and Wells Fargo Advisors of New Prague, handling, having the capacity to do some deposits in the name of the city. There's any other questions regarding that?
This action would be by resolution.
If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the resolution, to approve these depositories.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Sean Ryan, second by Dave Brusick. If there's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, four zero. Now, Patrick, I don't know if you want to say anything on behalf of the New Prague Times, but, no. By state statute, the City Council must designate a legal newspaper for general circulation of all its public notices. And it's recommended that the Council Mayor and approve the New Prague Times as the city's official newspaper. So, I guess I'll make that motion to approve the New Prague Times as the city's official newspaper.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusick. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay. City Engineer, Mike, you want to take this? I'm getting a little tired of.
All right, we've got under this the appointment of the consulting professionals that serve as the city, that being the City Engineer, the City Financial Advisor, and City Bond Counsel. In the case of the engineering firm, since 2009, the firm of SEH, short Elliot Hendrickson, has served in the capacity of City Engineer with Chris Cavett within SEH being appointed as the City Engineer. And then in the December meeting, we appointed him as the Municipal State Aid Engineer. On the financial advisory side, that being with Firm Springstead Incorporated, we've used Ms. Terry Heaton in that capacity as our financial advisor. And then, from Kennedy Grave, in the same firm that the City Attorney is from, is Mr. John Utley, has served as Bond Counsel for the city. City staff would recommend those three be reappointed in those capacities.
Okay. I guess we'll do, you want us to do each one separately, or can we do it?
Do them combined.
Okay. So, I guess I'll make a motion to approve City Engineer with SEH, Chris Cavett, City Financial Advisor with Springstead, Ms. Terry Heaton, and City Bond Counsel with Kennedy Grave, and Mr. John Utley.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusick. If there's any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Passes four zero. So, that's it for all the annual appointments that are required by city charter. So, next on the agenda, we have Jeremy Tokolsky with Fire Chief, and I was gonna say Buddy Pin, but I used my, well, you're gonna be Buddy Pin, I guess. Here to kind of talk about this firefighter's grant. Mike, do you want to open?
Yes, I'll have them come up to the agenda, the podium here. But just as a bit of a background, that we've been working with them, specifically with Mr. Pin's assistance, in putting together an application to go after some federal grant funds. And I'll let them go into a little bit of detail. There's also gonna be a request, I think, as part of the overview, as they've been working on this grant application, to provide for additional component that they would ask that would be added to this. I'll let Greg and Jeremy talk about that. But what we're looking for is council authorization to go after this grant funding. It wasn't anticipated to be needed in the budget till outwards of about 2018, 19, but they've got an opportunity that we can go after 95% federal funding in anticipation that we don't maybe get it the first time around. It gives us a couple of years ahead of when we would need to purchase that equipment. We're out trying to do it early. So, we'll worry about where the local 5% share has to come from, from the city, the Rural Fire Association, or the Fire Department in that mix. But the biggest piece is trying to get in and get our foot in the door for the federal funding. And with that, I'll let Mr. Pin explain the background of what they're looking for.
Yes, we are here tonight to ask for approval to submit an application to FEMA for their Assistance to Firefighters Grant. We are in the need for some new SCBA equipment. And we do have this planned for 2019 purchase, I believe. And was preparing to create this grant and apply next year. But with the timing of this current year's grant application period, and where we're at with gathering our information, I think we'd be able to submit a grant this year yet, and at least get our name out there and hopefully get some funding for this. If we do not get it this year, we will apply again next year, and the next year after that, until we're at the point where we need to make a purchase. This is the same grant we used to purchase new turnout gear back in 2009. And that was three years of applying before we actually got the grant. So, we prepared a grant in 2007, 2008, and 2009. We were awarded funding for that. This grant is worth quite a bit more dollar-wise. In 2009, the grant we received was for about $26,000. This grant, what we had sent over for approval was for just over $196,000. Mike had mentioned an additional piece of equipment that we may want to add into this grant is a new air compressor to help fill our air cylinders. Our current compressor is over 20 years old. And the new air cylinders take a higher pressure, and the compressor will not meet the needs of those new cylinders. And that will add about $20,000 to the amount of the grant. This grant is 95% funded by the federal government in FEMA, and it does require a 5% match from the local municipality. So, that will increase the amount that is needed for the 5%. I believe I had calculated $4,900 for the city's portion. And then there would be another $4,900 for the New Prague Rural Fire Association. The addition for that compressor would add about $500 to each entity. There's any questions that we can answer, or?
When you apply for this grant, is it an all or nothing type of thing?
It's not an all or nothing. They can look at it and say, "We think you can get by with less," and they would award us a lesser amount. That's what happened with our turnout gear. We had asked for more, and they looked at the age of all of our equipment and said, "We think you can get by with a couple of the pieces that we were asking for replacement." And they gave us funding for what they felt needed. It goes by age, and I think what we're asking for this time meets their high priority items. Personal protective equipment and SCBAs, which is a, it's listed as equipment versus personal protective equipment, but it is one of their very high priorities. And within that, the rate based off of your age, and anything over 10 years old gets a high priority. And anything that's more than two NFPA revisions old gets high priority. And we meet both of those criteria.
Okay.
And Greg, for the mayor's benefit and the council's benefit, would you explain specifically why we're having to go after this equipment?
Yes. These, the air packs that we have now, the SCBA equipment, was purchased in 2004. All the air cylinders that we have and the packs have about a 15-year lifespan. We'd maybe be able to extend the life of the harnesses and the air packs, but the cylinders would need to get replaced. And that's at a cost of about $1,000 apiece. And we currently have, I think, 68 air cylinders. So, we'd be looking at a $68,000 investment just on air cylinders, and we would still have 15-year-old air packs. The air packs now are getting more costly to fix. As stated, the NFPA revisions, the old versus new is working time. We'll get approximately what, 40 minutes working time versus 15. It's newer technology, and we do meet the criteria for this FEMA grant.
When is the grant due?
The application deadline is the 15th of January.
Okay. And then when do you usually find out? Is it a six-week?
It is a long process. I think the very first awards will be end of March. I know previous years, it's, it's taken six to 12 months from application period to find out in the past. There's two different rounds of scoring. There's a computer-based score that gets assigned to each application. And they look at all your statistics, your call volume, your breakdown of call volume, the city budget, the Fire Department budget as a percentage of the city budget. And based off of that computer score, you're either given a yes or a no. If you're given a no, it's thrown out. If you're giving a yes, it goes to a peer review. And they get firefighters from around the country that actually sit and read through every application that makes it through the computer-based scoring. And they're the ones who make the final determination.
Greg, why the discrepancy on the harnesses to the face masks and the amplifiers? Are some of them don't need replacing, or?
No, we don't need a full 30 harnesses. We have 30 members on the Fire Department. Not every member is going to be wearing a harness at the same time.
Oh, okay.
But everyone will have their own face piece and mask. So, that's why the numbers are different.
Any other questions?
No, I'll make a motion to authorize them to submit the FEMA grant.
I'll second.
Okay, I got a motion by Dave Brusick, and second by Sean Ryan to submit the FEMA grant application.
As amended.
Let's see.
As amended with the additional request of including the $20,000.
The compressor?
In for the air compressor.
Yes, I'll second that.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Okay, yes, as amended with the air compressor, so it'd be whatever, $216,000, $291,31, roughly.
Yes, roughly.
Okay. Okay, I got a motion and second. If there's any other comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. Good luck.
Let us know if we.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Let us know if we get through the computer.
Do you get notified of that, then?
Yes, we will get notified on that.
Okay. That'd be great if you could just, Jeremy, shoot us an email or something like that.
Will do.
Good luck.
Thanks.
For doing that, Greggy.
Next, Ken, are you gonna take this?
I will. Just give you a quick update on the status of the indoor swimming pool. Talked to Tim Dipburner, I think it was last week. Ended up getting a project and construction schedule for this building and the pool addition, which is on the second page of the memo. And main things we wanted to highlight, just for the council's information, I know some people have been asking, not necessarily on the council, but just general public. Construction plans for the pool specifically in this building will be done by the end of January. They're gonna have bidding open, basically, from the end of January to the middle of February. So, that's the bidding time period. They will award the bids at the end of February, and actually specifically the date that they have and their schedule is February 25th for the award of bid. Obviously, we'll know at that time how the alternate bid items for the city's portion of the pool with the patio and those other items that were kind of the alternate items, or how those are playing out for the bids, so we'll know that at that point. And then they plan to, between February 25th and 14th, obviously, review all that information. And they're hoping to award on March 14th, with construction to start after the ground is thawed after that time, so. This will be happening sooner than later, obviously, with getting that pool underway. One of the discussions that kind of went along with that, that I wanted to bring to the council's attention, was regarding the three-meter diving board. The school has a project oversight committee, which is separate from the pool committee, that I had actually sat on. And this project oversight committee had discussed the merits of keeping the three-meter diving board in the plans. They noted there's obviously an increased cost to do that. They had initially thought it would be something that you just have a simple ladder up to the three-meter board and up, but there's falling hazard with that, mainly with kids that go up, get too scared, and try to come back down the ladder. So, the alternative is a, basically, a regular stairway to a platform. There's obviously extra costs for that. So, that was one reason why they thought it wasn't merited. The second reason was obviously increased liability. If you put in that stairway, there's not as much of a liability, but the cost. So, that was one thing they talked about. You can put the one with the ladder in, but you have extra insurance liability. Final item, they didn't think the potential usage would really warrant the inclusion in that cost. They don't need it for physical education curriculum. And it also would not be used by any high school league competition. It's strictly a club sport, or any other group that might rent it, adults, et cetera, for diving-type use. So, with that said, they're not planning to include it, but it had been something that had been talked about in the plans as far as, you know, the facility as a whole that would have a three-meter diving board. So, just wanted to bring that to your attention, to see if there was any desire to have it be bid as an alternate and then picked up on the city's dime. I don't know, I'm not necessarily recommending that, just more want to bring it to your attention. Unless it's a really strong opinion that, boy, you really think you gotta have that three-meter diving board. It could be added later, would be costly to do that. But at this point, they're not planning to include it, and just wanted to kind of keep you in the loop on how that was going. That diving well was still designed to have a climbing wall, which would be one of the bid alternates for the city's portion of the cost. That would still be included if bids come favorably on the side of the pool. The diving boards, if you look on the plan, the diving boards are on the, what would be the east end of the pool. And on the north side is where that climbing wall is. It doesn't show it on the diagram. The diving, the climbing wall would not be moved in place of the three-meter diving board. So, it would just be kind of an open area with no board there, is in effect what would happen.
Are they planning to have three one-meter boards?
No, just two, is my understanding.
Okay, so the diagram is one was probably.
Yeah, this showed one of them would have been the three-meter diving board. So, just basically subtract that one on the, basically the south end, I believe, and have the two in the middle.
Okay.
What would be a cost if you had to add this later? You have any idea?
Don't know that. They actually had, Wald Architects was working with our pool consultant, and who was also the school's pool consultant, to put together some designs that never got to the point of even estimating. But the way they explained it was that you have, obviously, and I don't have the diagram in here, but there's a platform that was almost construction and attached to the back wall of the indoor pool space to hold the structure up. And then you would walk under the diving board platform. It's a pretty substantial cost increase, and even more so to do it later, just because you wouldn't have all the supporting infrastructure, you know, footings and that type of thing.
But that really was never a piece that was part of our decision-making, or the ancillary pieces that we weighed in through the whole participation in that discussion. As Ken and I talked, as we take a look at it, that, in my opinion personally, I think that's a decision that this is part of the school facilities, and whether you include that or not really comes down to their choice. I don't think we want to step in and determine what kind of ancillary pieces like that, you know, when you start dealing with liability and choice and usage from either the swim team or swim club standpoint, that, as Ken and I talked, we wanted to make sure we advise you of that, but it certainly would not be my recommendation that we step in and take on that decision-making piece over their choice.
Because I think, wasn't it, isn't that three meter, isn't that what they use for college?
Yes. Is what they use for college.
Right, and I think that was the swim coaches' thing, is that they needed to have a three meter.
And for, I think, some of the club activities, I recall as well.
And even, they had noted specifically, Prior Lake did put in a three-meter board, and it's not used as they thought it would even be up there. Certainly isn't a revenue generator.
Right.
But I think you can see on the pieces that we worked with the school on, that with our piece of the pool, the rework of the family dressing rooms, shower rooms there, that all of that got reworked. The deck showers, all of the input that we had has come through in the final design.
Looks good. Any other questions for Ken? If not, I, Ken, I appreciate the update.
Yep.
It'd be interesting to see how that progresses. Next on the agenda, I'm sure this is yours, Glenn.
Yep.
Sidewalk addition, adding a. Sidewalk addition, adding a sidewalk to the removal, snow removal.
Yep, we have, in the city of New Prague, we have a snow removal routes, and as most of you do know, they're a priority one and a priority two. Priority one gets done as soon as the snow's done falling. Priority two is done usually within two days, but is not done completely the first day. We had a couple requests in the past and another request here lately for the sidewalk on the north side of 12th Street Southeast. Ken's got the... Are you gonna blow that up for us? Which is starting just a little bit east of Science Avenue and then going up to...
Edge of the high school property.
Yep, up to the edge of the high school property. High School does in front of their property, takes care of that section, and the rest of the section is not being taken care of at this point. Our policy says that if a sidewalk is on your property or next to your property, you're responsible to take care of it. We feel that this is a little unique situation, because all these properties, it's in their backyards. They end up either going through their backyard with the snow blower, going down the road to get to the sidewalk. It'd be pretty inconvenient. With all the buildings that are in that area, being the community center, the two schools, the gymnastics, and the sliding hill, we feel that this would probably be a good area to pick up by the city and do as a priority two. So, staff recommends that the city council consider adding this section of sidewalk on the north side of 12th Street to the city's snow removal priority route two map, because there's a lot of young families in that area. So, after about the third or fourth request, we considered it, and we think it's a good idea.
Are we doing other sidewalks in that area, so it's...
We do. We do the walking path on the south side of 12th Street up to Columbus, or from Columbus going east, so we're real close to that area. So, we won't be going much out of our way, block and a half or so to catch this section.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah. Glenn, what do you mean by high spot? You have some boxes with high spot on it?
Would be something in the sidewalk that catches the snow blower, so it's just for the people that are looking at these maps, that don't know the area as well. Just a heads up, you know, slow down so that you don't hit it too hard.
Okay.
That's... Those are notes for people that are running these routes that don't typically do it.
We have a public version that doesn't have all that on it. We use the internal one for the meeting here.
Okay.
You guys have a time that you... After the snow event, that you hope to have that done? Is it...
Priority two routes are usually done...
No, priority one. I mean, is it within 24 hours, within 12 hours, within...
Yeah, unless we have a breakdown or it's a long, drawn-out snow event, yes, by 24 hours, that priority one is done.
And then priority two within...
Two days typically.
Forty... Okay, alright.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I'll make a motion to add that portion of 12th Street to the city's snow removal route.
Okay.
I'll second.
I got a second by Sean Ryan, a motion by Dave Brusick, second by Sean Ryan to add that portion of 12th to the priority two snow removal plan. There's no other further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes 4-0.
Thank you.
Did you get that, Mary Jo? Did you get that? It was Dave and Sean? Okay. Next, Mike, I assume you're gonna take this?
Yeah, Ken assisted me with this, but in putting it together, but I'll give you a little bit of background, is that 2016 here is the third year of a land lease that we... Ag land lease we have with Lanesburg Farms LLC. They came to us this December late, right up against the end of the year, apparently for tax purposes, wanting to see if we would be interested in extending the lease that they wanted to kind of pay ahead and had made a proposal to us. We made a counter offer, and so what you see in front of you is kind of our counter offer, that current year, 2016, the rate on our land lease is about $284 per acre. They were willing to pay that for '17, but then wanted to drop it to $250 and $250 for '19 and '20, and we countered with that at the $270 and the $250. And so, the gentleman, Mr. Ralph Sullivan, was in yesterday, Ken?
Yes.
To, as an inducement, has provided us with a check pending council approval to pay for 2017 and 2018 already upfront. And as we've taken a look at kind of where land leases and ag land leases are going, that the rates we have, it would be very beneficial for us to lock these rates in and take that, especially with two years of pay ahead on the ag lease. So, he will have paid already for '16 and is proposing to pay '17 and '18 that we have in hand already.
So, how can you tell that rates are going down for leased land?
Oh, yeah, that they started going down last year. As we take a look at where we're at at $284, as we took a look at the industrial park land lease, and then just taking a look at where land leases are going, is that they are headed in a southerly direction from where we've been at, and I think it's to our advantage to grab at these rates and run with them right now.
Because I was hearing the other day, yesterday, I think, that at least Scott County was giving farmers $350 an acre for CIP land.
If there's some federal monies in there, that that may be different versus the straight... That's not what we're looking at on these.
Okay, yeah, I just thought, well, maybe we should all put it in CIP.
Get about that athletic field.
He lets us put the excess snow?
Yes.
There, too? How often do we take advantage of that?
Haven't lately.
Nope, we haven't lately. We only did it there one year.
Oh, 2010, '11, whatever that was?
Yes.
No, it was just '13. When was it?
No, it was '11, '12, actually, now that I think about it.
Okay.
Yep, that was the only year we had to, but we have it in the contract that if we want to, we can.
Okay. And I did notice in the lease that we have a 30-day window that we can get out of it if, by chance, something happens, and we can sell the land or use the land for some other purposes, so. Okay. Any other questions for Mike in regards to this? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the new three-year land lease with Lanesburg Farms.
Second.
Second by Jenna Tuma. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes 4-0. We're down to that lovely consent agenda. All I gotta say is it looks like you guys had a busy December 21st meeting, and David, I'm sure you handled it with...
Oh, yes. Mike helped out a great deal.
Well, he still helps me out a great deal, trust me. I guess everyone did recall that you got a new handout with the new payment schedule. I guess Glenn mentioned that the payment for the baseball field was not included in the original one of $109,000, so that was really the only change on that. Any questions on anything in the consent agenda? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. There's no other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes 4-0. Now, we're at miscellaneous. Jim, you have anything?
I do not.
Just a question. Have you... Anymore on English Street? You know, I know you did send a letter to that gentleman and...
The other... Yeah. I have not contacted or made contact with Mr. Price yet since the speed study, the second one was done.
Okay.
But I will this week yet.
Okay.
I should note on that, too, the city engineer has the new speed study data and the old speed study data, so we can take a look at that and get kind of a traffic engineer's opinion on that, the crosswalk and the concerns that are brought up, so.
Okay.
We'll see where that goes, but...
Good. Well, I think at least after the meeting, he was seen pretty happy that something was gonna be looked at, and even the communications that I've seen from you, Jim, I think that you've done a good job in, you know, keeping that in front, so, thank you. Glenn?
Just an update on the baseball field. We have a couple meetings tomorrow, one with staff and Brian Jurey tomorrow morning, just to kind of talk about where we're at and kind of planning for what's happening next year, and then also a meeting with the committee members tomorrow night to also kind of talk about where they're at, where we're at, what we feel needs to happen, what, you know, just kind of get that ball rolling again for 2016, so. Other than that, I got nothing.
Okay. Ken?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Yes. If you didn't hear that, we're gonna do a council photo at the next meeting, so everyone make sure we look our best, I guess. Mary Jo? She's starting off 2016 tough again, isn't she? Mike?
I have nothing.
Sean?
I was just hoping either Jenna or Ken could give us a little background on the planning commission. I read the... In regards to the backyard chickens, I read some of the comments that were stated in there, and I don't know if there's a slight update or...
Yeah, I give you updates.
...you can tell us the tone of the meeting, maybe?
Well, we knew the planning commission ended up the same opinion as the council, obviously, in regards to the chickens, and they would tend to support language to allow chickens in some fashion. And I explained to the planning commission, the charge from the council was to hold the public hearing on the language to prohibit chickens, and I've even heard from a couple of people that had been at the meeting or written correspondence, and I don't think they're gonna put up any additional fight or anything or submit even any comment, but certainly it is a public hearing, and the reason it had to go to the planning commission, when an issue was at the council, Scott and I had talked, did not believe that we needed to make any change to the zoning ordinance, and in that case, it would have simply come back to the council for adoption of some change to the city code. The planning commission ended up getting it kicked back when Scott had drafted language to make some changes to the zoning ordinance, and that requires their review to hold a public hearing by our zoning ordinance and by state statute before it comes back to council, so that's why I got routed back to them. I obviously knew their thoughts and opinions as it was headed back that way, so we'll kind of just route it through, but the charge was in the hearing that'll be held for the language to prohibit. Now, certainly, I know we'll probably get other comment at the meeting from the planning commission, but it was explained how your recommendation was to review prohibiting language, so.
Okay.
So, on the 27th, there's gonna be a public hearing at the planning commission?
Yes. Mm-hmm. We should have it back to you guys, I would think, that first meeting in February.
Yeah, I was a little upset. I got mad at Mike and Ken for what the paper put in, because the way that article was written in the paper, it sounded as though that the planning commission was going to override the council, and so I jumped on Ken and Mike inappropriately. I apologize to both of you.
And from sitting on the planning commission, the planning commission is very passionate about kind of progressive thinking on the chickens, and so they do feel pretty strongly about it, so I can understand it's kind of a tough situation of back and forth.
We'll probably still get comment to the contrary back, just so you're aware, but yeah.
Okay.
Ultimately, your decision as a council.
Well, thanks for the update. Sean, anything else?
Nope.
David?
Yeah. What's the status of JT Hightaway?
Materials are going out from the city attorney night this week.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay. Jenna?
All I have is I spent most of the day or part of the day with a lot of the city staff getting tours, backdoor tours, and it was quite enjoyable. I think we should be really proud of our city facilities and facility staff, and I'm just overwhelmed with how clean and organized the facilities are, and the team and the staff are... They care, you can tell, they take pride in their work, and they share stuff, and they're just really proud, and you can see the positive attitude, so I think we should feel pretty darn good about our operation here, so, nice job, everybody.
Good, good. Anything else? I don't have anything else, so I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusick. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes 4-0. Thank you, everyone.
Happy new year.